Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Caddo Parish regular meeting. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order at 3:34 PM. And Mr. Clerk, if you would, give us a roll call.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Crackman is absent. Commissioner Greg Young.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
Commissioner John Paul Young is absent, I believe. Commissioner Burrell is also absent at the moment. Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cothran.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
All right, you have ten of twelve commissioners. I'm sorry, nine of twelve commissioners present. And that does constitute a quorum.
Thank you so much. We've already had our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. But at this time, I would like to ask for us to just have a moment of silence and remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, that brings us to agenda additions. We do have a number of potential agenda additions today. And there is one item that was listed as a potential agenda addition that is no longer needed. So those items, would you like me to read those and then y'all can take up a public hearing? Or would you like to go one at a time? Or how would you like to?
If you would, read all of the potential agenda addition items and then I will open it up for one hearing.
Okay. So the first item, 4.1, is a potential agenda addition, which is a special resolution for Reverend Dr. Thomas Miles Jr., and that is to celebrate his church anniversary. And then 4.2 is a potential agenda addition, which is a special resolution for Marcus Palmer, who I believe is in the audience with us today. The third item, 4.3, is a potential agenda addition, a special resolution for Courtney Brownlee. And 4.4 is a potential agenda addition, which is a special resolution of remembrance for J. Bennett, former Senator J. Bennett Johnston. The final item, 4.5, that's on your agenda, was related to an alcoholic beverage hearing committee that took place earlier, but due to the activity of that meeting, there's nothing required.
So we don't need to remove the item?
Right, nothing needs to be done with 4.5. So just 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4. It would be appropriate if there was a motion to expand the agenda to include these items and then?
Moved by the chair?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second. And at this time, I will open up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against adding the following potential agenda additions for Marcus Palmer, Courtney Brownlee, J. Bennett Johnston?
And Thomas Miles.
And Reverend Dr. Thomas Miles Jr. I see no one here to speak in favor or against. I declare this public hearing closed. Okay? Please vote.
Thank you very much. Those items, those four items will now be added. Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't taken a vote yet. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Can we still get the vote?
Yes, you do. It does have to be unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazarus.
Commissioner Greg Young and Commissioner Grace Ann Blake, it has not logged your votes. And Commissioner Young, I know your machine has been problematic. You want to do a voice book? Oh, it's okay. Thank you very much. That motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. And those items will become items 8.6, 8.7, 8.8, and 8.9.
8.6, 8.7, 8.8, and 8.9.
That is correct. And at this point, would you like to move forward to citizens' comments?
Yes, please.
Okay. Citizens who wish to address the commission are asked to fill out a comment card and submit them here in the box to my left. Comments are limited to three minutes, and I don't believe we've received any cards at this time.
Okay, next item, please.
So that brings us to, we have no scheduled visitors today, so now we can adopt regular session minutes.
Moved by the chair?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and second. Please vote.
I see Commissioner Young. There you go. Thank you very much. My screen does the same thing. It's very frustrating. Thank you for your patience. And that motion does carry with nine in support, three in opposition.
I agree. I agree, Commissioner Young. Okay, next item.
That brings us to special resolutions, where we have 8.1 through 8.9 to consider. And would you like me to just read them one at a time? Or is there a motion?
I have a motion to englobo all of the special resolutions, including the, well, you did mention 8.6, 8.7, 8.8, and 8.9. And I would like to move to englobo and adopt all of the items with the special presentation that is here to present.
Second.
Right? And I have Commissioner John Atkins on the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'd just like to, it's a little late, but just for the record, could you add me, if it's okay with Mr. Lazarus, could you add me to 8.1, please?
I certainly will. And just as a, to further expand on that, for the resolutions of remembrance for past colleagues, both Jim Smith and for Senator Johnston, we did include all twelve members.
Thank you so much.
Knowing that all of you would probably want to be included there.
All right, Commissioner Atkins, did you want to speak?
No, that's it, thank you.
That's it? Okay. Commissioner, Vice President Ken Epperson?
Mr. Clerk, have you found out anything about the arrangements for Commissioner Smith?
I believe his obituary does say that when the arrangements are, but I believe-
Okay, you don't have to, just send it, get it to us later.
I will, I'll show you, I'll show those details, but his obituary is public now, so I will share that with you.
All right.
And with the rest of the body.
See no one else on to speak? I have to check on my friend over here. He's problematic. Please vote.
Commissioner Young, would you like us to log that as a yes? I might throw it out the window for you.
None dare call it a conspiracy. I can't make it work.
Is that an affirmative?
A woman's touch doesn't work either.
Okay. That motion does carry with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. At this time, would you like me to proceed with the presentation?
Yes, if you would, if everyone would, please stand. And Mr. Palmer, with you and your guests, come to the front.
Okay, at this point in time, I will read into the record a special resolution of recognition for Marcus Palmer. And it reads, it reads, "Whereas, the Caddo Parish Commission desires to give appropriate recognition to those young people of Caddo Parish who by their extraordinary achievements have distinguished themselves in ways that reflect favorably and positively upon this parish. And whereas Marcus Palmer is a senior at Woodlawn High School, where he exemplifies excellence in both academics and athletics. Whereas, at an early college student at Southern University at Shreveport, Marcus is taking dual enrollment classes and maintaining an impressive 3.9 GPA, while his high school GPA reached a remarkable 4.44 last semester. And whereas Marcus will be graduating with his associate's degree from Southern University of Louisiana on May 12, 2025, at the Shreveport Convention Center. And whereas Marcus's academic achievements earned him a membership in the prestigious Honor Society Phi Theta Kappa. And whereas athletically, Marcus has achieved legendary status as the Louisiana State Champion in the Division II Super Heavyweight Powerlifting Class through relentless hard work and determination. His outstanding lifts include a 740-pound squat, 440-pound bench press, and a 430-pound deadlift. Whereas on the football field, Marcus has consistently shown as a leader, being named All District for all four years of his high school career, and earned all-state recognition during his senior season. His dedication and talent have secured him a football scholarship at Louisiana Christian University, where he plans to continue his athletic and academic journey in sports medicine. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission, meeting in legal and regular session on this third day of April 2025, that it does hereby, and again, once again, heartily commend and congratulate Marcus Palmer for his success and for the pride and honor he has brought to his family, his school, and his parish. Be it for the resolve that this commission does wish for Mr. Palmer much continued success in all of his future endeavors in life." And that is signed by Commissioners Gage Watts, Epperson, Jones, Thomas, and the rest of the commission.
Please be seated. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, and welcome. We have several commissioners who are on the board to speak. We have Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to say congratulations to you, Marcus. As I joke with many young people who I'm in the same district with, I'm glad you're graduating. Marcus gave us a lot of trouble when we played Woodlawn. Very, very athletic young man, but a very humble young man. He's not just here because of his athletics, he's here because of his academics as well. And so I wanted to, I saw Ms. Fitch, probably why I called you up, she's always bragging on Wingate, always bragging on Wingate. And I love that because we should brag on Wingate. There are some great things coming off of Wingate Boulevard. Dr. Smith, thank you for what you're doing in the City Grove area. We really appreciate that. Coach Esters is doing a great job with the powerlifting team. He's fierce, y'all should see him at a powerlifting meet, but he loves those children, and you could see it. We hosted a meetup in Northwood, and I just, for the first time, had to, you know, saw him in action. And Marcus was, he didn't lift in that meet, but he was coaching the other athletes, you know, and just kind of showing them the weight. Well, it's evident, you know, that he knows what he's doing because he's a state champion. And so it's just great to have you here. I wanted the entire parish to get to know you. I wanted them to see about your accomplishments. I wanted my colleagues to meet you and get an opportunity to hear about all the great things that you're doing. And so that's why I thought it was very important that you came here today. It's really important that our parish recognizes our young people, and you all need to know that we're paying attention. And so because of that, I wanted to tell you congratulations. I'm excited about your journey, getting ready to go to college to play ball. And so I hope that you take the same fire and drive that you have now down, as Alexandria area you're going, take it down there and show them what the 318 is all about. And just keep your head up, and I pray for many great things to come for you. And if you ever need our help here, I'm just a phone call away. All right? So congratulations again, and thank you all for coming out and making sure that you got here today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say congratulations to you, Mr. Palmer. It's really a great thing to see you combine your athleticism with your academic achievements. I'm always overjoyed and I get emotional when I see those young people walk across that stage earning their associate's degrees. I see Ms. Fitch and your principal there. Thank you all for giving them that opportunity. A lot of people don't have that opportunity to get that head start. So I think that's a really great thing for you, young man. The sky is the limit with all of your achievements. Keep going forward. Just wanted to say congratulations to you. I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake?
Thank you, Madam President. Marcus, this is pretty incredible. Parents, amazing. What is your secret sauce?
Taking in everyone's opinion, you could say, or voicing, letting people voice their perspective on what you have, just to embrace what people, the advice people can give you. That's a lot of what I do. I have a lot of conversations with a lot of people, my coach, anybody grown older, more wiser than me. I can sit and listen and take in and try to, try my best to, when I go do things, I bring that with me to make me better. There's a lot of listening and taking in, so I can be great.
That's incredible. It's going to be wonderful watching your journey. Take others with you. I mean, you're a true one percenter in our nation, and it's incredible. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Vice President Ken Epperson?
Brother Palmer, you are a good ambassador for Caddo Parish, good ambassador on behalf of your parents, good ambassador on behalf of the Caddo Parish Public School System. And please continue in the vein that you're going now, and you would definitely rise high in today's society. Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Epperson. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Brother Palmer? Next month, April, May. May will mark 50 years since I graduated from Woodlawn High School. And I'd just like to congratulate you for what you've been able to achieve as a student, as an athlete. You join a long list of legendary figures who have graduated from Woodlawn. I've had the privilege of putting Woodlawn as my high school for many, many years. I think about when I attended Woodlawn, Terry Bradshaw was such a legendary figure back then. And of course, you know, right there in that gym, you know, you can see the championship. Also, Terry Bradshaw broke the national record at the time when he was a student of the javelin. He threw the javelin further than anybody had ever done in the history of America. And then came Joe Ferguson, and many of us have had the opportunity to watch Robert Parish's career with the Boston Celtics. So look, hey, man, you belong. Hey, you know, hey, you know where you at, my brother. And I just want you to know that I'm so, so proud of you. And selfishly, you've given me an opportunity to brag on Woodlawn, and that's so important to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Ron Cothran?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Palmer, I just wanted to share my elation in your accomplishments to date. And most of all, you know, I'm looking at parents, I'm looking at coaches, I'm looking at teachers, and whatever else might be standing behind you. And that's one of the best feelings that an adult can have, is to stand behind a young man that they know have great potentials. And the most important thing you have to remember is that they sacrificed a lot for you to get to where you are. And the thing is, I'm sure you have given them that and some. The most important thing, and I will share kind of jokingly with you, the only disappointment that I have is that you're not going to Grambling. Okay? But the thing is, again, you're going on to the university that you've been chosen for. And the thing is, I would just share one thing that I share with young people all the time. There's a song that I learned a long time ago, and it's still near and dear to my heart, and it's called "Order My Steps," because I promise you, God would order your steps if you listen to him. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. Commissioner Ed Lazarus?
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, young man. Your credentials are quite impressive and speak for themselves. Good luck going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazarus. Second time around, Commissioner Stefan Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to remind my colleague, Commissioner Cothran, that we do have something called the Transfer Portal. And so after Mr. Palmer goes and he finishes up this degree, because he's going in, he's going into college with an associate's degree, he's going to get his college degree before he gets his high school diploma, and, which is impressive. Ms. Fitch is at Woodlawn now, but she's done this with countless students in Caddo Parish, and Marcus is another example of it. But when he's done at Louisiana College, we're going to be pushing for him to get in the portal and join Coach Mickey Joseph down on Exit 81. So that is our prayer, that he'll end up on Exit 81 at some point, you know, the Lord willing. Yes, sir. And Commissioner Thomas, I see your face, so save all southern comments for another day. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. I'm going to take presidential privilege and say maybe we just want to keep riding on to Washington Parish. And exit over there, ULM, University of Louisiana Monroe. All right, Commissioner Victor Thomas?
Thank you so much, Madam President. I will go ahead and take that privilege for the Gramblingites that are on this board to congratulate you, Mr. Palmer, on being a Southern University Jaguar. We are very proud of you to continue that legacy. So congratulations, sir. And wherever else you decide to go, you're Jaguar at heart, and we're very proud of you, sir. Thank you very much.
Mr. Palmer, we are very, seriously very proud of your accomplishments, and we are just ecstatic because we know that you're going to do great things in this world. We hope that you would consider coming back home to Shreveport one day, to Caddo Parish, and then making it your home, because people like you are who make the difference. And if there's anything, as it's already been stated, that we can do to help you on the path, please don't hesitate to reach out to us and contact us to see how we can help. God bless and keep you all. Congratulations to the parents as well.
Madam Chair, I don't have a button over here.
I'm sorry. Let me recognize Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you.
All right.
Marcus, I've been hearing that name, Palmer, floating around here for a while, so you must really be doing some things. Want you to know that ULM is not very far from here. And I still promote it. So if you decide to have another home, ULM is still there. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. And the floor is open if you would like to say anything to us as well.
I would. Thank you all for having me. First, thank God, and thank these people that I do have behind me and beside me for being behind me and on my journey of being, trying to be great. They've been behind me, letting me know what I need to do, the ins and outs, making sure I don't stumble, I stumble, I might stumble a little bit, make sure I don't stumble too hard, I bump my head too hard. And just being there, taking me where I need to go, just all of the above, just being there for Marcus Palmer, that village that I, that every person, I feel like every person needs, this is my village.
Yes.
This lady right here, that man right there, he might, he's trying to stare back the old cool, but he, you know what I'm saying?
Who is that lady? And who is that man?
This lady right here?
Yes.
This is Mama Bell right here.
Yes.
And that's Papa Dog. Yeah, they play a big part in me being great, and I take a lot of it from them because he's been in here a long time.
Yeah.
I take a lot of the consideration and put it into me so I can walk, try to walk my head up high and walk great. And I thank this lady right here for coming to this.
Who is that lady right there?
This is Ms. Fitch. Yeah, she introduced me to this program, coming to Woodlawn, seeing me do work, thinking there could be more great out of me. And I thank her for seeing that in me to give me the proposal to do great.
Yes.
For me to be able to get my associate's degree. I thank her for that, and I thank this man right here.
And who is that man?
This is the principal of Woodlawn. He stepped behind me all the time. When I, when powerlifting, he said, I need something, he said, I can get it, let's get it for him.
Yes.
And the time doing my work, he'd thank me all the time, tell me that I'm doing good. Sometimes people need, I even need to be told I'm doing good all the time. That's what we do. We don't just sit back. Some persons may do, I don't know, but he be in the, he come in the class, he let me know you're doing good, how you doing, and do you need anything? Being that support that I need, that any young high schooler need, he does it, and I appreciate you for that.
It's amazing. Thank you so much for just sharing a piece of your story, and I just want to say that it just may have fallen seven times, but it is up to us to always get back up again. You are the epitome of what it takes, all of us, to raise citizens, viable citizens just like yourself. And I know that you're such an inspiration to your peers. And I hope that they're watching and listening right now to know how important it is to listen to our elders. I heard you say so many courageous things that are full of wisdom, and that is where it comes from, by listening to someone who has traveled the path and don't want anything for you but the best. So you continue to always keep that in mind, and you will go beyond your wildest dreams. And Commissioner Burrell is back on the board. He wants to speak again. Commissioner Burrell? This is second time.
Yeah, I don't even have a button, so I don't know.
It's all right.
But I'll speak again if you like.
Well, your button is on, so if you're not on to speak, you don't have to.
Okay.
All right. Okay. So I don't see any other commissioners? All right. Ms. Fitch, you have something you want to say? Mom? Dad? Principal?
Well, I'm not mom, but I do love him as though he were my own, and I'm very proud of him. And I want you to know that everything that your heart desires, I hope you get it.
Amen. Thank you all so much, and congratulations again.
Jaguar pride.
Thank you.
Jaguar pride.
Commissioner Burrell is back in the queue again. Let me clean this up.
Let me just go ahead and speak, Madam Chair.
I got it.
The Lord must be calling on me for something.
I got it, I got it.
Okay.
All right, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Otherwise, we can move forward to Communicating Committee report.
All right, Administration, Mrs. CEO?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
You should have poet laureate information in your lockers. You will be making that selection soon, and so there's information in your locker about the potential candidates. I told you, informed you on Monday that the new security process will start in this building April 11. Beginning then, you will need your badges to enter the doors, the front doors, and you'll need your badges to work the elevator. So if you want to go to any floor in the building, you'll need your badge in order to get to that floor. So if you don't, your badges should work, let us know if they don't. And you should have, this is the City of Shreveport badge. If you don't have one, let us know, and we can make arrangements for you to get another one, but you will need those badges to work the elevator and get into the building.
I want a clarification, Madam?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bryant, you saying, I mean, I've got a Caddo badge that allows me to access all these. Did you say I need a City of Shreveport badge also?
That's actually-
You know, we all work for Caddo Parish, and Caddo Parish pays part of this rent.
That's correct. But we have two sets, I think you should have a badge that, it's a gray badge or blue.
Yeah, likely the one that you've probably always thought of as your Caddo badge is probably the Shreveport badge. There are two badges that we issued everybody at the beginning. They're similar, and most people put them back to back and never think about it.
No.
But you only have one?
I've been around a little longer.
Yeah, yours might be a little different, but we can certainly update it if, let's see. That's the correct one, yeah. And they do look different for some people. The newer ones will have your photo on it. The older ones?
Like mine are yellow.
Your newer one doesn't have? Have a photo on both.
Well, please try to test your badges so that we can know if they're not operating the way they should the next time you have opportunity, so that we can get those fixed if there are any issues getting in the building or working the elevator.
What about this green badge I have? That's a secret door.
I'm not sure about the green badge or the yellow badge, or we should have, bring them all with you, and let's see which one works. That's all I have for today. You don't take any questions?
I have a question.
All right, I'll get you in the queue. Commissioner? Okay, I got four on the board.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Commissioner Ron Cothran? Did you have any questions? Okay. Any of these who are on the board are these questions for Administration?
My question-
Or only Commissioner Young? Okay, Commissioner Young, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted some clarification. You indicated that there's a City of Shreveport badge. Why, if this, I have two badges. I have the one that allows me access. Okay, that's the parish badge.
No, no, that door, with the access to door, that's the badge that's issued by the city.
That's the city badge.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so my other badge that says property, says Parish of Caddo? Okay, this badge won't get me in the elevator?
No.
Okay, so what is the purpose of the Caddo badge?
The, one, that you work for Caddo Parish, and then it can be programmed to access doors that we may work, like upstairs. But we don't do floors, the ground floor through the seventh floor.
Well, okay, so the technology is not available, that we can just use one badge? That accomplishes all of these tasks to gain access? That's why we need so many badges?
I'm not gonna say the technology is not available, but from a security standpoint, since the City of Shreveport is separate from the Parish of Caddo, and we have less employees in the building than the city does. So that's why we work with the city. They manage the building. And so we provide them funding for that, our share of it. But because of, we can't, because of security reasons, we don't want them to have access to our information on our employees and them having, it's just a security issue. We can't necessarily have access to the City of Shreveport's data. And we don't want them necessarily on ours, but that's why we are using separate system. I can't say there's not technology to combine them. We're just not at a point that we have elected to combine those.
That's clear as mud, but it'll be.
It's saying that for us, we think it's better to have the two badges.
Okay.
If I could add, just as a helpful bit of information regarding this process, the security process will obviously be something different for everyone in this building. And so there will be somebody stationed at the front who is not new to this. She helped during the COVID time period, and she will be helping in the transition. We're gonna provide a set of pictures of all of our commissioners so that she will have familiar faces and be able to recognize you as commissioners, even if you don't personally know her. But you'll hopefully come to, and if there is difficulty in the coming weeks in the transition, the sheriff's office staff is aware that that might be the case, and they're prepared to, you know, try to help everybody through this transition. So bear with us, and we'll do our best to make it a smooth one.
Well, I just want to go on record, and I'll say this today, and I'll let it go. I don't like it. I don't like it. I don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Are there any other commissioners with any comments or questions for Administration? Right? Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, that brings us to a president's report. Did you want to?
Sure. We have communiques also.
Yes, I'm sorry. Skip right past. I thought I knew you had a few people on the board for communiques.
I do. Commissioner Ron Carther?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to share a couple of things. First of all, the sheriff will be having a walk with a purpose, Texas Marshall, on the 7th of April 6, starting at 6 o'clock and finishing at 8 o'clock. The Long Range Committee had a meeting today, and the recommendation was to, that the ordinance 6525 of 2025 be postponed for additional language. And lastly, I had an opportunity to attend the Commissioner of Insurance briefing on yesterday at the library in Southern Hills, and he shared a lot of great information concerning what's being done or attempted to do to lower everyone's insurance. Of course, we all know we have the highest insurance in the nation, nation. And the thing is, again, they're attempting to put some things in place to reduce that. And just a sidebar, I share with you, when I came down here from Ohio, it just blew my mind how much insurance was for cars and homes and things of this nature, because I had never seen anything that high in my 20-plus years of being in the military. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Commissioner Carther. Vice President Ken Everson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to share and invite our commissioners and maybe some of the staff members to the Caddo Community Action Agency's main office tonight at 455 St. Vincent Avenue. The corporate chief executive officer and his staff of Shreveport will be having family engagement night. That's tonight, starting at 5:30, Caddo Community Action Agency, 455 St. Vincent. The, help me, Ms. Nations, the program, which the Head Start Program is, is the Monfort? Waterford, the Waterford Program, which I know that Commissioner Thomas and myself had, had several people at our, I know our conference in town and legislative conference. But low and behold, when we got back, we found out that Caddo Community Action Agency had already implemented that program. And I wouldn't miss the night for nothing because Brother Matthew Nations is going to be one of the ones that mastered that reading concept of it tonight. So he's going to be received number one. He's number one out of the whole Head Start Program.
And that's Michelle Son, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Brother Matthew Nations. He made a commitment to him while he was down here. He was gonna be a top student. So he lived up to it. That's all I have, man. Thank you.
Parliamentarian Victor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. I did just want to remind the public of a few events that are going on here in our parish before our next meeting. Number one is Jazz Fest on the Red. It's gonna be downtown Shreveport, April the 12th. That should be a very, very festive family occasion. They'll be honoring some of our local legends like Mr. Dorsey Summerfield. I do think they're in talks of honoring Mrs. Stell Brown as well, who we know sang with Elvis Presley. I did also want to remind everyone, well, announce that there is going to be a free expungement clinic. That's gonna be May 14th from 10 to 2. That's gonna be at 5,000 Greenwood Road. It is important that citizens apply for this clinic. You can reach out to 318-629-5916 in order to apply for this program. Once, if you are eligible, they will let you know that and give you additional information about that clinic. Just want to remind everyone that eligibility does not, for the services, does not give them eligibility for the clinic. Not only that, I also want to announce that the Red River Revel Cork Festival, which was slated for Saturday at Festival Plaza, has been rescheduled due to weather for Sunday. So I just want to make sure that that is, that the public knows about that. That is one of the fundraisers for the Red River Revel Festival. Once again, that has been moved to Sunday. I also want to announce from my Animal Services Department, the Rabies Clinic. Rabies Clinic will be at Summer Grove Baptist Church, April the 26th, from 10 to 2. Once again, that is a free rabies clinic. Mr. Samuel, did you want to give any information about that? While you come up?
So basically, it's, we had it there last year. So it's gonna be the first 300 shots or 400 shots. Of course, we know rabies is a thing here in northwest Louisiana. It's not a fact that we don't have it. We do have it. We just don't submit every wildlife. So it's important to get your animals vaccinated.
Thank you so much. I definitely want to commend you guys for the last time I did visit that clinic, and it was a very great turnout. It was very well organized. Also want to remind everyone of the Caddo Parish Sheriff and the District Attorney's Mister Mina Warren Clinic. That's gonna be this Saturday, April the 5th, from 8:30 to 3 o'clock. That is going to be 501 Texas Street. You're gonna enter on the Texas side. Just want to remind everyone of these events, especially those that are facing any legal crises. These opportunities are available for you to avoid any mishaps and make sure that you can move forward with rehabilitating your lives. So just wanted to make sure I announced those things. And I do believe that is it, Madam President. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It helped me tremendously. Commissioner Graceanne Blake?
Thank you, Madam President. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I wanted to share some information. Sexual violence imparts every person in the community. Every 68 seconds, that's one minute and eight seconds, an American is sexually assaulted. Every nine minutes, that victim is a child. Meanwhile, only 25 out of every 1,000 perpetrators of sexual assault will end up in prison. Please, if you can, use your voice, and if you cannot, contact someone that can. 911 is always ready to assist you. I'd also like to remind everybody that this weekend, the storm system is gonna strengthen, and there are a lot of events that are happening throughout Caddo Parish. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for letting people know about Cork. And that this is a good time to remind everyone to have water, battery chargers, batteries, food, and gas in your car, ready in case needed. Keep a pair of shoes and something handy to cover your head. Head injuries are the number one injury in strong winds and tornadoes. And please do not forget your animals. Please bring them in as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. See, no other commissioners for communiques or committee reports. Vice President Everson, did you want to do a committee report about alcohol and beverage?
No, ma'am. It was moot. How to pronounce Ms. Fraser? Moot? Okay.
All right.
There wasn't an action need to be taken.
Thank you. That's what I wanted for the record. Thank you so much. Parliamentarian Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. I did also want to mention on yesterday, there was to be a Light It Up Blue event for Autism Awareness Month that has been postponed to the end of the month. I do believe we will be doing something in our chambers for autism, so we'll save that for that. But it is at the end of the month, and I believe it is April the 30th. And that will be downtown Shreveport as well. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew about that as well. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. And I'll be brief with my president's report as the next item, Mr. Clerk.
The president's report at this point. I was so excited to hear it earlier.
Thank you. I just wanted to say Happy National County Government Month to everyone and to remind commissioners to submit your youth student commissioners for the day by tomorrow to our clerk. They need to get the names of those students so that they can make sure that they're communicating with the staff and the principals there at their prospective schools. Our events will be held on Thursday, April 17th. April 8, there will be a town hall meeting for More Town. It will be held at Impact Church on Broadway Avenue at 5:30 P.M. The Walk with a Purpose has already been mentioned. April 6 through 12 is National Crime Victims Rights Week. If you would like to register for this walk, you can contact Malaysia Simon at 318-681-0870. Love the Boot Week begins this Saturday, April 5th through Saturday, April 13th. Caddo Parish Declaration on Litter is joining Love the Boot by cleaning up and beautifying Caddo Parish and encouraging all of our citizens to join us in these efforts. This is Autism Awareness Month, as it was already mentioned by Commissioner Thomas. The Seventh Annual Perfect Fit Autism Foundation Superhero Fund Run, Light It Up Blue 2025, will be held April 26 at Betty Virginia Park. You can go to perfectfitautismfoundation.org to register and find out more information. I saw Director Patrick Wesley come in, and I want to call him up to play some emphasis on all of these events that Parks and Recs are having this weekend. It's a real big kickoff, and we have almost a phone book style plethora of programs and activities that will be held. But I know that you want to talk about this Junior NBA Skills Challenge and the Youth Baseball Skills and Drills Clinic, and anything else that you want to add.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and to all of our commissioners. We have been busy, as you can see, planning for a crazy hectic spring and summer here in Caddo Parish. And first of all, I want to thank you and the administration for all the hard work and giving us all the funds and resources that we need to make, to bring all these programs to fruition. And our tagline is, "We work so you can play," and that's our golden rule. We do work so the citizens of Caddo Parish and Shreveport can have a quality of life. So again, thank you so much. You know, all this fun started last year, being named a national accredited park and recreation agency. Again, there are over 10,000 parks and recreation agencies across the country, and there are only 213 that are nationally accredited. Yours truly, Caddo Parish Parks and Recreation are one of the 213 that are nationally accredited. It means that we are operating on national best practices and standards, not just in the summer, but 365 days a week. We don't think that we're good. We know that we're good because the national accreditation standards have told us that we were good. And that's, and again, is a compliment to Caddo Parish and the administrator and her staff and all the people that support us. When you receive those accreditations, it's like a magnet. Nonprofits, private sector, they come to you with ideals and want to partner with you and establish collaborations with you. One of the major collaborations we have is Major League Baseball. So Major League Baseball came to us and said, hey, why don't you get up under our umbrella and be an affiliate of Major League Baseball? We are an official affiliated under the Texas Rangers in Arlington and the Texas Rangers Double A Minor League Program, which is in Frisco, Frisco Rough Riders. So we are official affiliates, and they, training material, equipment, anything that we want and request, they pretty much give it to us in reference to the development of baseball, from T-ball, coach pitch, live on, to girls' youth softball. So the focus is with Major League Baseball is all of the youth, but they have a special focus for youth in underserved populations. And they're into the equity and trying to get more girls to play and participate in sport. So the focus is girls' softball. You'll see us talking a little bit more about girls' softball and middle school age all the way up through high school. And one of Major League Baseball's primary television partner is Major League, is a Major League Baseball Network. Over several million viewers nationally and internationally. So Major League Baseball connected with Major League Baseball Network. And they are coming in this weekend and doing a spotlight on Caddo Parish Parks and Recreation Youth Baseball League Program.
That's a big deal.
Which is exciting. So that'll be, it was originally scheduled at Captain's Tree. It's on Saturday, the 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00. We're gonna be at the Acro Sports Indoor Facility. We did have it scheduled at Captain's Tree, but due to the inclement weather, we're gonna transition over to the Field House at the Acro Sports, just off of Lyon Avenue. That address is 735 American Way, just right off of Lyon Avenue. And we'll be over there. And also, Major League Network is gonna come and do a story on our new youth development program complex. And they helped us secure a little over $400,000 to build a synthetic grass turf infield off of Commissioner Everson's District, PBS Pinchback Park. And we'll be over there Saturday, and they'll come in, and they'll be filming and just looking at all the newness and greatness that we have over there, and we're excited. The parents are excited. I mean, and this will affect all 12 districts. So everybody will benefit. There's no zero sum game in this situation when it comes to recreation and improving the quality of life for our kids in Caddo Parish. So we're gonna get out there and have a, we're busy this weekend. We got it. And then if you look on page two, we have the Junior NBA Skills, same template. We are now an associate affiliate member of National Basketball Association. And it's amazing when you get national credit. They call you, you don't call them. They call you. NBA, NFL, MLB, these are nationally, internationally known brands, and you don't get up under their brand by being average. So we're excited. Caddo Parish is excited. Our administration and all of our park users are excited. So come out Saturday, Saturday, rain, sleet, whatever it is, whatever is flooding, whatever it is, come out. The NBA Junior Skills and Drills Competition is on Saturday, April 5th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at Huntington High School. It's a memory of Devin Myers. Everybody know nationally and locally, Devin Myers was killed. He was a young basketball player at Huntington that was shot and killed. Just some senseless crime and violence going on in our neighborhood. So we're still doing this in his memory for him and his family. So come on out. We have some mental health professionals. So come on out, we have some mental health professionals that'll be there and if kids want to talk about some of the issues that they're going through now, some issues that they don't want to share with their close friends or their parents or respective peers, they can come out and share those issues with, with them at that time. You'll be surprised what, what our mental health professionals are hearing today with our kids. So again, we work so we can play and we just, that little, little part of the whole gamut that we're trying to do with a safe summer, our crime prevention, and we're all a part, we're, we're, we'll be coming to you over the next two to four weeks with, with several proposals. One is, you know, our, our feeding program, which is our grab and go, Safe Summer Feeding Program. We'll be asking you to help provide grab and go meals and snacks for our summer campers and all of our summer programs and activities that we have. And then we'll be coming to introduce our first bona fide Safe Summer Crime Prevention Program. And we've got some heavy hitters involved. We've collectively, the Caddo Parish Agencies have collectively come together. We're not working isolated and individually anymore. We're sharing our programs, we're sharing our services, we're sharing our activities and sharing our resources. So we have the Parks and Recreation Department, the Juvenile Justice Department will be, be with us. The DA's office will be with us, the Sheriff's Department will be with us. And Project Celebration, a nonprofit, will be with us. We've got some heavy sponsors, heavy hitters, KTBS, Cumulus Alpha Media will be helping us be that microphone to kind of help spread the word of how we want Caddo Parish to be a safe community. And it's going to be something new that nobody's ever seen, ever, in the history of, of Caddo Parish. So thank you so much. Feel free, if you have any questions about any programs or services that we're at, we're serving this spring or this summer, feel free to call us. But most importantly, what we're going to be doing for you all, to the administration, we're going to, whenever we have an event or activity in your respective district, we're going to be shooting that information to you and giving you heads up to come out and come out and, and communicate with our, and share, you know, be a part of what's good here in Shreveport, this, Shreveport and Caddo Parish this spring and this summer. So thank you again, if you have any questions and then we'll be up over the next two to four weeks with some other presentations, then you, you all can hammer me then. Thank y'all.
No, don't leave yet, because you know, we have a couple of questions right now.
Yes.
I have Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Patrick, this May Day hike in Berry Delight sounds fun, but when you look, I think it's, I'm not sure where it is. It says Walter B Jacobs Memorial Park here on the, on the illustration, but then down here it says Eddie Jones Park.
Yeah, we still want, we still, we still list Walter, we know we're in construction process with Walter B Jacobs with the New Nature Center. So we still have the identity, but all of our programs are in other places now.
So that's, so that's where it would normally be. Well, I just don't want somebody to go out to Walter.
No, most 99.9 perceive, know what we're doing. We've been, you know, we've been closed for almost three years now. So all of our programming is in other sites, but we still have that, still carry that Walter B Jacobs Nature Center brand for, for our staff. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm glad Commissioner Atkins mentioned a different program besides the athletics because a lot of people assume that recreation or sports and recreation just means athletics when they hear recreation. But there are a plethora of programs that our, our Parks and Recreation Department offers. One, I think that's kind of getting ready to kick off or has already started with a couple of classes, is Through Their Eyes, the Photography Program, which is really good. We just offer a lot of things here and I'm very proud of our Parks and Recreation Department. You all have gone above and beyond and I'm, I'm putting emphasis on this because I, I see a lot on social media by people complaining about what, what's not going on and they always say Shreveport, Shreveport, Shreveport. Well, the Parish of Caddo is doing a lot of great things with Parks and Recreation. And so I want the citizens to know that almost anything that you can be interested in, recreation wise, we probably have a program for it. And it's just about, you know, making sure that we get the word out, not just from the parish, but you know, all of us as well, making sure we explain to our constituents what all is offered, not just for children, but for adults as well. I saw the chair aerobics for the seniors, you know. A lot of that is offered and they may just not know about it. So let's just make sure we do a great job in helping our Parks and Recreation Department with getting this information that, and thank you for this, almost a booklet.
Yes.
It's a lot, it's a lot of information.
Two months.
Oh, oh, my.
It's just April and May.
This is awesome. But it's, but thank you for this information because it prepares us to be able to speak with our constituents concerning the things that you offer. So I just wanted to put emphasis on that, you know, everything with us is not about athletics. Recreation goes so much further than that. And like I said, if there's anything I can do personally, you know, you know how I feel, man, you know, we've talked several times before, if there's anything I can do to kind of help push the envelope a little further, to make sure that, that we're able to, to get the word out, please let me know. I'm probably going to go do a live after we get out of this meeting, just explaining the things that are coming up this weekend, but also to put a further emphasis on, I think the photography class is really good for young people who are interested in that type of thing, because it's not really offered in school. So I think that would be pretty awesome. But congratulations, keep doing the great work.
Thank you Commissioner. One, one thing that we've focused on since day one, since I've been here almost six years now, is that we're trying to focus to develop the whole child, the whole family, the whole community, and not just focus on basketball, football, those traditional athletic and recreational sports that we're, we're doing lacrosse, we're doing disc golf, we're doing chess. These are some non-traditional, what we find out, a lot of people don't play football and don't play mainstream basketball, don't play baseball. So we're just trying to do something that fits everyone. We're getting information, we're working with Crystal, trying to get as much information out to the public as possible. You know, social media platforms, Instagram, all of those new social media platforms that all of our teams and youth are on right now, we're trying to connect with them. We're trying to get surveys and feedbacks of how we need to get the information out to them and the parents. But most important, we're trying to get the parents to understand that you need to get your kids into some structured programs. Driving down Clive Fan or downtown at 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock is not a structured program. It's not going to help your kid in any form or fashion. It's just going to create some crime activity somewhere down the line. So we just try, that's why we're working so hard with the criminal justice agencies and just trying to keep the programs either free or low as far as, because some parents have four or five kids in one family and they can't afford all the registration at one time. You know, so we're, we're understanding and we're, we're working with families and we're doing the best that we can. And I just want to thank y'all again for understanding kind of what we're trying to do, short term and long term, to enhance the quality of life. If a kid is not happy, the parent and the home is not happy. If the home is not happy and functional, the community and neighborhood is not. If the community and neighborhood is not functional, the parish and the city is not. You know, if the parish and city is not, we don't become a resilient city, neighborhood. So we're just trying to be, eventually use the platform to eventually five, 10 years become that true resilience. I'm so tired of hearing what other cities are doing and how they're getting these national recognize, we can do the same, there's no difference. They're no different, they have no more resources than we do. But we just have to connect those dots, do what we're doing with the Crime Prevention Coalition, you know, share resources, share ideas and, and be cordial to one another. And then you'll, you'll see all that connecting and come to fruition. So that's what we're trying to do. It's no, no magic formula to that. We just cultivating relationships and just trying to do the right thing and be, and make sure that it's done in a timely fashion, that's all we're trying to do. Thank y'all so much.
And you are definitely doing that. And I know our assistant administrator can appreciate this, this was one of the very first discussions that we had when we were talking about making plans for juvenile justice and what we could do with prevention and intervention. One of the requests that I always had was to bring all of these ideas and resources to one table, because so many people were doing things in the community. It's, we were working in the silos, no one knew what each other was doing. So I want to say and commend you also for having this information listed at the bottom of this flyer, that you can visit us at caddoparks.org for complete program and contact information.
Yes.
So if someone is listening or watching right now, you don't have to try to jot down all of these different activities. I took yesterday to try and share some things on my personal Facebook page. I had a little time and I plan on trying to do it again this evening, as well as our Director of Communications is doing a great job in making sure that these press releases are being issued as well, because I've received one today about the change of the venue. So that's how we plan on working together, helping to make sure that we're disseminating this information to the community and letting them know that we are doing our part and we just need you to do yours, make sure that you attend, get the children there. And it's something for everyone. It's not just about saving our youth, it's about saving families and we're going to do it one event at a time.
Thank you so much. And we, again, we appreciate all what you all doing as far as y'all invaluable support. And again, we are trying to develop the whole parish and our footprints are all over Caddo Parish.
Yes, they are.
I mean, we, we, Ida always, Southern, Northern, Caddo and the, all the way almost to the Southern Arkansas border, we're programming there, all the way to Keithville, to the, to the, the Solder Line, to the East Texas, to the Greenwood Line and the town of Greenwood, City of Shreveport. We're doing things and one thing that we, we, we don't do and we try not to do, we partner and, and we, we establish coalitions, but we don't duplicate programs and services.
Right.
SPAR is doing football leagues and Godley's, why should we do a football league?
Right.
Doesn't make sense to duplicate taxpayers' dollars and spend that. So we'll do a Skills and Drills Clinic for Saturday for a couple hours like we doing this, but we won't do a 10 league game every Saturday. That's, we think that's a waste of taxpayers' dollars when we're duplicating services with YMCA Boys and Girls Clubs, SPAR and other recreational facilities. So that's, that's just our concept. And if you, you know, if you want to share some of your ideas, please call me and our team would love to come and, myself or my team would love to come speak and talk with you.
We do, we do.
Or your community.
I, I have a couple of the commissioners that want to speak on my president report, so we, we got you up here and I want to let them speak to you. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to commend you for all that you're doing, pretty incredible stuff here.
Thank you.
I have a question about your Safe Summer Program.
Yes.
If people in the private sector want to partner in or do anything, how would they contact you?
Yeah, they can call me at 318-212-0220, 318-212-0220. And/or they can go to our, our parish website or social media platforms and reach out to us.
Okay. And that's going to be a summer long program or like a one day event?
Yeah. Now, now the coalition, the Crime Prevention Coalition that we have in place now, we effectively, effectively in May, we'll be doing crime prevention year round.
Okay.
Because we pooled in our resources and our, and our talents to be all across Caddo Parish. So it's, the presentation that we're going to give to you is going to blow you all away next month and we're going to be excited. I mean, KTBS, all the radio, Town Square Media, the Alpha Media, Humus, all of those, pretty much every main major media outlet is going to be included in this process. You all, they'll be calling you all for interviews and remarks and things of that nature like we usually do. So again, thank you so much and appreciate you, Ms. Grace.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank Parks and Recreation for all their hard work and all these excellent programs. And I also wanted to make sure that we, that I let Commissioner Cothran know about Senior Day is May 9.
I'm trying to see you in the day.
Thank you, Madam President.
Hey, that program is you can sit and get fit. That's chair aerobics. That's our tagline, sit and get fit.
Sit and get fit.
Low Extremity Aerobics Class. I've, I've been in it many a times, it's fun. You got some issues with your lower extremities, they focus on lower extremities, little balls and things, but it's a good workout at your own pace. You can start when you want to start, you can leave when you want to leave, no stress. They just want you to get out that house and get moving. We've had people come in on assisted devices, canes and walkers, now they're line dancing. That's the thing that you don't hear a lot that happens, that makes the difference in, in some of the programs and services that we offer. So again, check it out, certified instructors, everybody's is, is on point and it's a great program.
When's the line dancing down there?
Yeah.
Is that, I think that's on Thursdays, right?
Yeah, so Thursdays at Galilee Baptist Church, 1500 Pierre Avenue.
Just finished up at Moon.
We have a good time, snacks and, and raising canes, we got Sam's, so many people help us out. Chick-fil-A, they all help us out and because they understand it takes partners to get all that done and, and sometimes you, you just don't know how this is developed, but it's, it's, it's just years of cultivating relationships and, and we enjoy it.
Good deal. Thank you so much. We appreciate you and your staff.
Thank y'all, appreciate y'all.
Commissioner Burrell, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burrell, tablet is not working and I hear you saying, Madam President, you are.
All right.
You have the floor, Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Patrick, I, I do appreciate these programs. I know when I was on the city council raising my two boys as a, by myself at that time. And it was a lifesaver for me to be able to take part in these summer programs to keep them out of trouble. They had just come from New Orleans and they were experiencing a lot of things down there and as a single parent and having two boys, I know the programs in the city was, was something that really helped me as a single parent. I'm not sure if you were there during that time, that was 20 years ago.
Yeah. Either with SPAR or here, either or.
And I'm glad to see those in the parish and right now I have all those boys up and grown, got their kids. And I have a seven year old that I'm looking to find to put somewhere. So I'm sure I'll find something in here for him.
Yes, sir. I'm glad you mentioned that because we talk about all those under the radar stories that like, like the senior came in limping and now he or she is line dancing. We get letters, testimonies from, from families and individuals. Say a father, single father who has a kid and he only gets a chance to see his kid in the summer due to custody situations. This father always puts his kid in our program and they bond over these 30, 60, 90 days like they've been together for years. And then two or three weeks later, we get this long testimony on how important these type of programs are to our communities. And it's not, thank you, Mr. Wesley, thank you, so and so, whoever our event coordinator is, it's always thank you Parish of Caddo. And that's, that's inclusive. That means we all are part of that success of the happy moment. That guy, that three year old grows up to be 28, 30, I remember when I was with, with Mr. Wesley, his program and Parish program, those are the memories that, you can't measure that.
Right.
I can't say that was a statistic, you just can't measure a smile, happiness, emotions, you can't measure that. But, but when we come up, I mean, we don't like begging a lot, but when we come, we really need it.
Yeah.
You know, so I just want to let you all know, we do a lot of things, we got a lot of partners that do in-kind services for us, food, consumables, equipment. So we're not in need of that type of stuff, but when we want to take it to another level, we really, we really need to take it to another level. So.
Well, the reason why, the reason why I mentioned that, that if it were not for that, I probably wouldn't have three fairly successful kids, one being a doctor, one being a chemist and another being an engineer, because they were in those programs and many of the, the, the people who they worked with, they still remember them.
Right.
And they are now in their 40s, believe it or not.
I think, I think society is continuing to forget that realistically, we putting more money on the correctional side, you know, criminal justice is law enforcement, courts and corrections. We're putting more resources and time on the courts and the correctional part and not doing the pre.
Right.
Three through eight. That's our mistake. That's just, that's just society. You know, on, on those 213 park agencies that are national credit, these are the ones that's trying to put the pre stuff early. If look, if your legis, if you have more legislation that you, and more resources that you put in, in Randall's program, more than my program, we got to start, you know, our radars and antennas got to be popping up saying, man, we not doing something right. Unless our crime prevention statistics are good, and they're not good, we know they're not good. So when it can't be good and we not do anything about it, so that's, that's all I'm trying to say. So I, I think it's, it's, it's all our responsibility from the seasonal part-time volunteer all the way up to the chairman of the commission and the executive. the way up to the chairman of the commission and the executive, you know, it's all our responsibility.
Yes.
Okay, but re-, in reality, we take what we get and make, you know, lemonade out of lemons, we go, we move forward, but in the big picture, those communities and those all-American cities and municipalities that are, what we trying to get, they're, they're putting resources and investing, they're not talking about a tax, they don't care about taxes, they're using the word investment.
That's right.
Because you're investing into your community, you're investing to people, you invest, and then that's the difference. We're talking about, my taxes didn't raise a penny or two, whereas their mentality is that they're looking at investments, quality of life, where my niece and granddaughter's going to be, schools, businesses are going to the Metroplex area, not, not downtown Dallas, they going to Plano, Frisco, you know, they going to those type of places, they're no bigger than Caddo Parish, but the mentality is different on quality of life and we just got to do that. We can't do that overnight and we don't want to do it, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't taken down overnight, so we can't build it overnight, but we just want to plant the seed, we just still trying to plant the seed and move forward.
We can see how passionate Mr. Wesley is and we appreciate how he do.
He started preaching like Pastor John.
That was scheduled, so.
Thank you so much.
Pastor John, thank y'all.
All right.
Madam Chair, I guess you have the floor, I do have an announcement.
Um, on the communicate, you want to get, I can get you on the second round of communicate.
Okay.
I've extended my president report. I just want to remind everyone that summer job programs, you are available, they are available for you to apply online, please go online and get that information at caddo.org backslash, I'm sorry, caddo.gov backslash jobs. Morning Star will be hosting a More Town Service Saturday Sharing next Saturday, April 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And on April 18th, there will be a More Town Community Festival that will be held at Bethune Oak Park Elementary School from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Light It Up Blue was mentioned, I wanted to give the time on this event that is being hosted by Council Chairwoman Tabitha Taylor is on April 30th at 7:30 p.m. at the Riverfront Amphitheater. Wear your blue in support of that. And I also wanted to mention that Mayor Arsenault and the Police Chief Smith announced the crackdown on squatting with new ordinance and enforcement initiative. So to my colleagues, I know that this is something that we discuss very lengthy and this operation is called Operation Ask Blue. And if you would like to report any squatters, you can contact Shreveport Police Department at 673-6950 or they have a convenient phone number of 311 for more information. I would like to recognize Dr. Ernestine Coleman is also in the chamber. Hey, Dr. Coleman. And lastly, I have, there were a few, a lot of recipients for the Women History Month recognition that we didn't get to call their names, so I wanted to make sure that we said their names here today and that is Desha Darby, Petrie Walker and Dorian Ford. So if you're listening, we have your certificates and there are many other certificates that are at our clerk's office. If you know that someone recommended your name, please contact our clerk's office. Ms. Ernestine Lester is also another one that was not read at the event, please contact our clerk's office to pick up your certificates. And that will conclude my president's report for the year, no, just kidding. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes the president's report and brings us to, we have no public hearings on zoning ordinances today, but we do have one public hearing on an ordinance and that is Ordinance 6525 of 2025. This is also the ordinance that was addressed in the committee meeting earlier today in the long-range committee meeting. This is an ordinance dedicating 50% of the income generated from the parish sheriff's sports wagering receipts to the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund and amending the general fund and the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund for sports wagering revenues and otherwise provided with respect thereto.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for Ordinance 6525. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this ordinance? CNN, I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you very much. We have no zoning ordinances for final passage today and the only ordinance that would be available for final passage today is the ordinance that you just had the public hearing for, that's Ordinance 6525 of 2025. That is an ordinance dedicating 50% of the income generated from the parish sheriff's sports wagering receipts to the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund and amending the general fund and the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund for sports wagering revenues and otherwise provided with respect thereto. I believe the committee did make a recommendation to the full body to consider postponing this item.
You are correct, Mr. Clerk, and I do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ron Cothran and a second by parliamentarian Victor Thomas. Commissioner Cothran, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There just want to share that the long-range committee did make a recommendation to postpone pending additional information from our legal department.
So that's your motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's your substitute motion and go ahead and speak on it and it was second by Commissioner Victor Thomas. Did you want to speak on it? That was it? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
No, thank you, Madam President.
All right, see no other discussion? Please vote.
And the motion is to postpone, is that correct?
Yes, until there's additional information provided by legal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion carries, that is with nine in support, none in opposition and three absent at the moment. And that brings us now to the introduction of ordinances. Because we have no zoning ordinances today, we'll go to regular ordinances where we have 16.1 is the introduction of ordinance number 6526, that's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Oil and Gas Fund and the Riverboat Fund to provide an appropriation of $30,000 for youth, youth outreach services, doing business as Jewel House and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That is, the 16.1, 16.2 is the introduction of ordinance number 6527, an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and authorized the parish administrator or a designee to sell the parish of Caddo's tax interest in certain surplus adjudicated properties and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That item is pertinent to District 3. And then introduction of ordinance number 6528, an ordinance to donate surplus property under Chapter 19, Article 2, Division 3 of the Code of Ordinances relative to donation of adjudicated property acquired by the parish under Louisiana Revised Statutes 472236 to authorize the donation of property to the city of Shreveport and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That item is also in District 3. That brings us now to the consideration of adopting work session minutes which are attached and 17.1.
It's been moved by Commissioner Stefan Jones and second by Commissioner Ron Cothran. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Cothran, please vote.
Now, motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition and two absent and brings us to the consideration of resolutions today. The first one that you have to consider is Resolution 21 of 2025, that's a resolution approving the holding of an election in Caddo Parish Fire District Number 8, State of Louisiana, on Saturday, October 11th, 2025, to authorize the continuation of special taxes and the renewal of a service charge therein.
It's been moved by the chair, second by Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Atkins, this is your district, would you like to speak on it?
No, it's not, it's not mine.
Is Commissioner Gray Sam?
No. It's mine.
That's mine.
Your Fire District 8 is not, it's not in the lower part of the parish.
All right.
Not to be confused with Parish District 8, so.
Okay, is there anyone who want to give any additional information on this resolution to hold this election for special taxes? No? Yes? Maybe so.
These are renewals, they're just continuations.
Okay, all right, and I see no other one, I see no one else for further discussion, please vote.
Commissioners Thomas and Burrell? Thank you, Commissioner Burrell, Commissioner Thomas, it's not logged here, but now it did, thank you. And that motion carries with ten in support, none in, none in opposition and two absent and somebody please, Michelle, can you remind me the motion and second?
Chair and Commissioner Atkins.
Atkins was the second, okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I can't see it, my screen died, sorry, thank you. Second, thank you very much, I just wanted to confirm that. Resolution 22 of 2025 is your next item to consider, that's a resolution opposing cuts to national aid programs and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Moved by Vice President Everson, second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Vice President Everson, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I looked up the definition of monarchy. This particular hierarchy typically starts with a monarch, a king, a queen, followed by royal family, then nobility, which includes the ranks of dukes, marquess, earl, discounts, barons and on down to the commoners, basically that has no say. I'd like to state that the reason for bringing this about is let us reflect back to 1776. Let us reflect back to June 14th, 1775, when the Continental Army was put in place under General George Washington to defeat the British monarchy, thus providing the impotence of democracy of the United States of America. And I think it basically sums it all up when we look at Article 7 of the Constitution, Amendment Number 1, which was ratified in 1791, and I'll read, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech, of the press, of the right, of the people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." Let's make sure we reflect upon that particular sentence. I received a few nasty emails relative to these three resolutions which I have proposed and of course generally I will answer back with our sentiment notes saying the Pledge of Allegiance of the United States or something of that nature, I never get nasty with them. So what I suggested to the last nasty email that I received about that was that they would get a copy of the United States Constitution and read and interpret for themselves. We have a right to petition any government entity relative to any situation which we feel is going contradictory to democracy. So this is all I want to share with you today and the other two resolutions that's come up, this debate that I'm proposing now, it will reflect in the same manner, so I ask for your support relative to this particular resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stefan Jones?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to make a substitute motion to englobo and adopt 18.3, excuse me, 18.2, 18.3 and 18.4.
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, you know, since we were reflecting on history, I would just like to reflect that I don't think that the founding fathers ever imagined a government the size of our current national government and also don't think the founding fathers ever envisioned a consistent overspending of, of government spending versus government revenue that's led to a significant national debt that's a threat to the, to the health and future of our country. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, I'm going to try to be very brief here.
Take your time.
There's a lot of things that our founding fathers didn't envision, our founding fathers didn't envision me sitting up here. They never envisioned black folks having any voting rights, they never envisioned black people being free. So I think we should always take a rather cautionary position when we reflect upon the relevance of what the so-called founding fathers did as to what's happening here today. What, what we're realizing here in real time is all of the gaps that are in our Constitution. You know, we've been taught since we were knee-high to a grasshopper how sacred and how ingenious the document that these gentlemen put together was and what we found out here in real time is all of these holes and gaps that we have a person in the form of Donald Trump who is pressing and he is pressing and he is pressing and probing and probing and probing, all of these assumptions that we have lived under and indeed that this country has, has flourished under. He's testing the courts, he's challenging the courts, he's challenging every institution that we have in America. And so for myself, I choose not to be a passenger. I choose not to be a passenger in the vehicle of change. I choose to be an agent, a driver of change and I'm not going to sit back and normalize what is going on in this country right now. As someone who is a student of history, that is in possession of a master's degree in history, I find it very, very difficult, I find it very, very challenging to live in this moment, to see all of the ideas that we have cherished, all that these gentlemen who are in these graveyards all over America had fought for. I can tell you, as someone who was less than a month removed from being 17 years old, that was running patrols in the mountains of Korea, walking down the streets of Seoul, Korea, traveling through the Philippines, traveling through Tokyo, traveling through Guam, all over Southeast Asia, I've never been so proud and what you have to appreciate is that I was someone who grew up in the dirty, dirty Jim Crow South. But for me to be in that uniform and to see how well we were respected all over the world, even as a young black man, I was so respected for, for wearing that uniform, to be identified with being an American. The sacrifices that I've had to make, the pain that I live with in my body today, for the first time in my life, I'm, I'm ashamed to be an American. I am ashamed of what I see going on in this country, it breaks my heart. I could see this, I could see this time approaching many years in the past. And it breaks my heart to see so many young men that have given their lives, so many women that have given their lives and we have politicians, we have elected officials who are not even willing to sacrifice their seats. These cowards, I find it unconscionable. So the oath means nothing? I've taken this, I've taken this oath as a 17-year-old. I took it again when I came to work for the poster service. I've administered this oath a countless numbers, number of times to, to young people and middle-aged people who have come to work for the poster service, that I was responsible for hiring them. I've taken this oath here, does the oath mean anything? How can we sit back and normalize the fact that we had people who were marching against the centennial of our democracy, tearing down the windows, fighting cops? Some police officers lost their lives and somehow we think it's okay to pardon those guys and investigate the people who were standing in the breach against this? This ain't normal, y'all. I can't imagine. I can't imagine if anybody, anybody would vote against any of this, that we're trying to make a statement. And I know I've heard it said here many, many times before that we should only focus on what's going on locally. Let me tell you something. I have never been one to be silent in times of great, great crisis, of great urgency. And I didn't sign up to be a commissioner to act, to abdicate my responsibility as a citizen. I'm never gonna do that. People who are responsible, people who, who are true to the cause, don't wait until the danger is right there at our doorstep. It's time to speak out now. It's time to stand up now. And what I'm discovering that many people, when they're talking about MAGA, what they really mean is they want to return to Jim Crow, but I ain't going back. I'm not going back. I can't speak to the rest of you all, but I'm not going back. I'm not going back to Jim Crow. I know what Jim Crow looks like. I grew up in the dirty, dirty South. I remember seeing the signs say "For Colored Only." I clean up the bathrooms. I wiped up the pee of people who worked right beside me simply because of the color of my skin. My classmates, I cleaned up their pee. I'm not going back. I'm not going back.
I yield to the Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in recent days, I've received some very, very nasty and ugly comments on the conservative radio station, social media, and what I consider magazines and tabloids. There seem to be nefarious movement, nefarious movement afoot by some local radical mega sycophants who are trying to silence local officials from using their bully pulpit on the city council and the parish commission in their meetings. The use of our bully pulpits allow us to educate our constituents and the public at large of the harmful policies being carried out by our local, state, and national public representatives that is adversarial to our public interests. Also, we are doing this under our constitutional right of free speech in case anyone does not know that America is a constitutional democratic republic, as long as we can keep it. Since the election of our new tyrannical president and his co-president Musk, the minority community have been targeted and under attack at all levels of government. Even the private sector has again resorted to discriminatory practices not seen openly in the last twenty years. I remember on my first day on the job at Bell South, my boss told me, "We don't want you here." This is my first day on the job. He said, "The only reason you are here is because the company was sued. And that's the reason why you're here under this affirmative action thing." I remember it like yesterday. And I see us going back to those days. There are those who wish to use public pressure from their, from their bully pulpit to silence our voices when these draconian and sometime racist policies, such as anti-D E I, anti-wokeness, Project Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, among other things, are setting us back hundreds of years. But as Commissioner Young says, we're not going back. Recently, a conservative radio local station here named Keel did a special program where the radio personalities trashed the black commissioners for pushing these resolutions to send a stern message of our concern about what we oppose at the local, state, and national government levels. Even Facebook have trolls that send out very, very negative mega messages. And they call them the mega, the mega, uh, the the mega patrol. They call themselves that. Also, our local gossip rag called The Inquirer, I use that term, has featured me in their tabloids more than once about my efforts to try to educate our public. This is nothing new for me, for Mr. Metal. I normally make his front page from time to time. I consider it a badge of honor. I find it very rich when a criminal can put my name and try to disparage me when he cannot hold a candle to my reputation over the last twenty-five years in public service. I refuse to give up my right of free speech to make my voice heard. This is not for me. This is for our future generations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Ron Carthay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I sit here and I ponder, and I listen to the conversations of my peers, and as I went back through twenty-four years of serving what I perceive to be the greatest country in the world, it saddens me to even say one word today. But the one thing I will share with each and every one of you all, particularly all the, those of you all that have never, ever slept outside in the woods, got shot at, lost friends, please, 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 respect the decision of others. The thing is, you know, respect goes two ways. I don't have to agree with you, but I need to take the time and attempt to understand you. You know, I've received this, this statement about two, three times this week from different people. And I said, "Maybe somebody's trying to tell me something." And I'm gonna share that with you very briefly, and then I'm gonna move on. We are not all in the same boat. We are in the same storm. Some have yachts, some have canoes, and some are drowning. Just be kind and help whoever you can. As I think about my constituents that have lost jobs here recently, as I talk to my constituents that are concerned about the different things that are coming out of the Washington, D.C. area, real or unreal, it's nerve-wracking, particularly to the elders. And I share with you, before you say anything, attempt to get to know your peers, your constituents, your neighbors, your citizens here in Shreveport, your members of Cattle Parish as well. Because the most important thing is so easy to send a text, an email. That's the easiest thing in the world. But I think you could probably learn a lot just by sitting and talking with an individual. There's been a lot of things to share today about what was. I too remember a lot of that. I was praying that I never, ever would see it again. That was my prayer, okay? But the thing is, is I sit here today and look at what is truly going on in America. It saddens me. And like I said, I could go on until tomorrow to share with you different things. But the thing is, I would go to my grave believing and wanting to believe that I served the greatest country in the world. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthay. Commissioner Blake.
Commissioner Blake. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to say that I go back and forth thinking about resolutions that are definitely about national issues. Us voting on these types of resolutions. And at the end of the day, I think that you can argue the fact that these do affect our constituents, and so therefore I won't oppose the bringing up of the resolutions. I am about facts. I think we all have stories. We come to this horseshoe with experiences that we are making decisions from. And I respect Commissioner Young very much. I understand his concerns, his hurt. But I'd like to share that I too sit here with great concerns. And for four years, I watched a party normalize things that were mind-blowing to me. I, as a woman, we were given the right to vote after men, after black men. So I too would say that maybe I wasn't thought of when our country was founded. So that we could agree on that. But I think a lot has changed. And for four years, I watched people not be willing to give the definition of a woman and still are fighting that fight. I will all day long fight to protect women and to protect my rights while protecting and fighting for other rights. I see this as not just financial issues, but true moral issues. And so I will be voting no for both. And this is more than just trying to balance budgets. I think that we have seen in sixty days, not just waste, but true theft of our taxpayers' money. And so I will be a no for that. I'm grateful that we see the waste and the theft. And I hope that we can spend it with programs that are staying within our country. And if it is sent out of our country, it is directly helping our country. Mass firings. Joe Biden's first day in office, eleven thousand jobs were wiped away. Joe Biden passed the most executive orders the first three months of office than the past three presidents. That was reported on CNN this morning. Tariffs. I'm willing to give anything a chance to get America MAGA great again. I'm willing to see what we can do to get business back in the United States. I grew up in a country that you were proud to buy American. As a business owner, I have suffered every day for four years through inflation. I have prayed every night for change in this country, and I see great change happening. And yes, we're in uncharted waters. But we had a party that lost its way of standing ground for morality. I'm grateful for what's going on. I'm a no on all three of these resolutions. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome, Commissioner Blake.
I'm so glad that the word theft was mentioned because there's definitely been theft that has happened in this administration. At least eight hundred and eighty billion dollars worth of theft to a friend that is in office. To say that you're against these resolutions is anyone's right. Or to be in favor of these oppositions. But when we talk about the facts and who this is affecting, you're talking about people who look like us as women. I brought up in our last discussion about this that there was a meeting that was held, that there was about women's health, a women's health committee, and there was no one, not one woman, that was included in that conversation. I think when we talk about the facts, we're talking about cutting AIDS to national aid programs. We're talking about the things that will directly affect us as individuals, as leaders in our communities, as federal employees. The mass firings that you are referring to or that is being referred to in this resolution affects people's livelihoods. This is talking about not just what it makes you feel like personally, because this is not a personal attack. This is talking about taking food off of table. This is talking about creating a different population, a larger homeless population. Because if you can't feed your children and you can't pay for a roof over your head, then where will you be? And the cut, the, all of the cuts have already began to take place in homeless environments. So I think that you should ask yourself what you truly believe in and what you think that is right for us. America has come a very long way. And in three short months, we have taken a turn for the worse in the wrong direction. These resolutions have merit. I believe that they do, because if they didn't, we wouldn't have the extensive conversations that we've had about it. All of us could pass this microphone around, and as I like to say, talking to Jesus comes about it. But the truth is, the things that has happened within this administration, I don't know about everyone around this horseshoe, but I know if some of us around this horseshoe had given eight hundred and eighty billion dollars to our friend, we would be more than just on the front page of a trash paper. So I am in support of these resolutions. And again, I publicly say to Vice President Emerson, thank you for your courage and your tenacity to reintroduce these resolutions back to this body. And I am in full support of each one of them. Commissioner Lazarus.
Call for the question.
There's no one else on the board, and I think everyone would agree. All right.
Is that, is that my acclamation?
I'm sure that's my exclamation. I didn't see anyone else on the board. Okay, at this time, we're voting. And we're voting on engloving, englobo-ing, and adopting Resolution Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, and Twenty-Three.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Thank you for the correction.
Mr. Clerk, my pad has died, but I would like to go on record as voting yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that motion carries with seven in support, three in opposition, and two absent. That brings us now to the next item on your agenda, which is the, I believe that brings us to old business, so that we have a selection of additional Youth Advisory Council members. Those additional names that have been submitted are on your electronic agenda. And at least three more commissioners submitted their names.
And Mr. Clerk, on this one, this nomination form, Taylor Franklin, I am her nominating commissioner.
I will make sure it reflects that.
Thank you. Next item.
Did y'all, do y'all wanna adopt the additional members? It would be appropriate if y'all wanted.
It's been moved by the Chair. Second by Commissioner Carthay.
I have a question regarding, I don't have a board, so.
Yes.
Um, will we, will this stay on our agenda as well as old business, or?
It, it will, yeah. So what we'll do is we'll add these names to the permanent list. We'll, then we'll have that attached, and it's available for additional names until the committee is full.
Thank you.
Please vote.
So we're voting on the council here, ma'am?
Youth Advisory Council, yes.
And that motion carries with all in support. That's ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent. The next item under old business- The next item under old business requires no action today. It's just a reminder that Resolution Two of 2025, in your capacity as the governing body for the I-49 Tiff District, will be on the agenda on April seventeenth for a public hearing and additional consideration. You have no additional new business scheduled today, so that brings you to your second round of communiquees and reports.
Commissioner Ron Carther.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to acknowledge two different situations. Southern Hills will be having a little pickup on the seventeenth of April from eight to twelve, but usually people get there between about eight-thirty. And also CARE, which is also the Cedar Grove area, will be having a cleanup on twelve April this coming Saturday from nine to twelve, and we'll be meeting at Mount Olive, seven forty, Turner Lane. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple things, I'm not sure if this was announced earlier, but the NAACP Officers' Installation Ceremony will be Wednesday, April ninth, oh shucks, at the Hilton, six o'clock?
O'clock.
At six o'clock. The second thing I have.
Hilton downtown.
Hilton, Hilton downtown. The Alpha Alpha Fraternity Incorporated Delta Upsilon Lambda Chapter is having their Alpha Esquire Butilium at LSUS Student Center at six o'clock. This butilium is to raise money for scholarships. This is our mentoring group, where these young men go through our program, and we teach them, you know, a lot, a lot of things, as well as the, what is that test that they normally take? Well, a number of tests that we, we test them on, and we have actually over a ninety-five percent graduation rate. So I appreciate you coming out and supporting it. Thank you, Madam Chair. That will be Sunday.
Thank you. Commissioner King and Everson.
The Pine Road Every Business Association, in conjunction with the Louisiana Workforce Commission, will be hosting a job fair, May first, Thursday, from ten a.m. to two p.m. at the Grace Point Church Gymnasium, sixty-eight twenty-five Pines Road. Thank you.
See no other commissioners on the board to speak?
We have no additional requests for public comment.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.